Here.
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 Counselor Elmer.
Thank you. At this moment, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and this is voluntary. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the December 18th, 2019, January 2nd, and January 15th, 2020 City Council minutes? Any discussion? Or a sec—do I hear a second? Any discussion? Yes? Please speak into any—if you can find a microphone. Thank you.
Are we able to separate that for those of us who weren't here in December?
Sure. Do I hear a motion to separate—well, so it's been moved in seconds, so do we... So can you please move to separate?
I'd like to make a motion to separate the approval so that we are voting on the December separately from the ones in January—the minutes in January.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Alright, so do I hear a motion to approve the December 18th, 2019 minutes? All those—in favor? Opposed? Absentions? Raise your hands high. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the January 2nd and January 15th, 2020 Council minutes? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Absentions? Alright, there we go. Can I please have the microphone turned down a little bit more? Thank you. Next, we have communications from the Superintendent of Schools and School Committee.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for hearing from us. We are actively working on the budget for next year for fiscal '21. We've been meeting upwards of twice a week, usually at 8:15 in the morning. That'll get your blood pumping. We are looking to make some decisions for actually tomorrow for a posting in the recorder for a public hearing on our budget. And I actually—Superintendent Harper invited Susan Exstrom, who is the Chair of the Budget Subcommittee, to join us tonight as well, which I think is a wonderful idea, so she can speak to the details of that. And we're also looking forward to seeing tonight how things proceed with the city's vote on the Unit C contract.
Take it away, Susan. Okay. So, we have been working diligently on the Budget Subcommittee. It is enlightening, certainly, as it is for all of you, as you're looking at all budgets, I'm certain. One thing that I struggle with, and we talked about this evening, and have made a compromise, essentially, I have a really hard time not showing you a number that is actually reflective of what the cost of educating our students is. And it's a big number, because we have a lot of students. And the school district, just by virtue of being a department of a city that's struggling, has been underfunded. And I'm not looking at anyone saying any other department hasn't been underfunded either. But this is just—keeps getting pushed down further and further down the road, and we're going to be in deep trouble. And I—the more we put our head in the sand, the more—the worse it's going to get. So I'll leave it with that, and you guys will debate it all. I do want to make one comment about the Unit C contracts. I know that there's a decision being made this evening. And sort of in light of what I've just said, and hearing that we've been underfunded for years, in fact, the requests that we have made—we knew when the request was made that it wasn't going to be enough. We knew that from the start, which is appalling to me. I'm a CFO and Director of Operations. You don't do that, because it's bad business. Cities shouldn't do that either. My own—my own little comment there. At any rate, so on December 6th—I—Adrian Nunes, our former Chair, and was kind enough to include me, because I was asking some questions about how stabilization accounts work. Because we were talking about contract stabilization, all the general stabilization funds, things like that. And so what Liz sent to me was that the Special Education Stabilization Balance, as of December 6th, is $169,099.12. That is enough, almost, to pay for one student out of district cost. One. Just letting you know. The general stabilization balance, which can be applied anywhere, has $1.894 million in it. I understand a savings account is necessary. Absolutely. I'm a bookkeeper, all those things. I totally get it. But we're already underfunded, and we're going to work hard to make sure that our IAs are paid what they should be paid rightfully, and have been shorted for years. But I wonder what's—where is that? $1.894, that's a lot of money. Free cash, Liz said. There will not be any free cash for FY '19. I'll shortly receive official notification, but our DLS rep is indicating free cash is negative. So we can't really count on that either. So I know that we're all trying to figure this out, and really, this is a group exercise in how to take care of our community. But I'm curious about where—what—so—I asked about general stabilization. I asked the previous mayor about it several times, and got stone-faced, no response of how it's being spent or why it's that high. So those are my only thoughts. Thanks, guys. I know you have a tough job as well. I'm not saying any of us are in an easy spot. Just sharing some thoughts.
Good evening. First, it's obviously February Vacation Week. At the same time, you see a lot of people behind you not on vacation. To families that are at home, we hope that you're enjoying time with your youngsters, and we hope you also appreciate the fact that they're in school the rest of the time. I want to thank the educators that are behind me, and the Unit C folks that have waited patiently for the topic that's being discussed tonight. And I want to thank the Council for taking up the issue as it's in front of you. As I understand the executive order that you're considering for a second reading, we appreciate that some thought has been put into potential funding sources, and that it's a partial funding. I'm prepared—if this goes through tonight—to recommend to the School Committee that we use any available reserves on the School Department to fund the balance of this, so that the Unit C staff that are doing a tremendous job with our students receive the raise that they got a tentative agreement for over six months ago, and that they've been waiting for, and that they have the assurance that they will be paid a fair wage for the work that they do. Having said that, I want to just reiterate that I'm concerned, because our stabilization balances, as they are right now, even before Unit C, are on track to be depleted by 2024. And because those reserves are a part of our budget, they're not slush funds, they're not additional, they're not kiddies that are for something else. They're part of our budgeted—all-funds budget every year. So having said that, I'm also going to ask the Council, in a separate time, in ways that you may have additional flexibility that you don't have tonight, to consider down the road if there are other ways that there might be some opportunity to replenish that Special Education Stabilization Fund, and possibly to replenish funds that the School Department is putting forward to do the right thing by these employees in the short term, so we can work together in the long term. Thank you.
I would just add one other thing. Excuse me. We—we've had one city-school meeting so far that had some great discussions, and really shows that I believe City Council, the mayor's office, our finance managers, and the superintendent, and myself can—can work very well together, and I'm pleased that that is happening. I've also had a number of opportunities to talk directly with the mayor about ways we can better work together, and I'm looking forward to putting all that into action. And I know it will help both sides—the schools, as well as the city—to understand needs and wants and actual realities better. And of course, we would happily take questions.
Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, each of you, for providing that update. I want to let you know, and let everyone in the room know, that Ways and Means Committee this evening issued a unanimous positive recommendation to fund the Unit C contract as proposed. I want to speak to one or two of the things that—you spoke to Member Exstrom. As far as general stabilization, it is a high number, the $1.894 million. However, it's city policy to have $1.5 million. Our bond rating depends upon it, and is noted in the S&amp;P report. That said, I certainly—as a counselor—am open to using funds going forward as necessary. I know this is not the only contract that we will need to fund this year. And certainly, when free cash is eventually certified, I know that I will be looking to put it into special ed stabilization first. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you for all your efforts on this.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, I also just wanted to say that meeting was one of my favorite meetings from my personal job to this job. A lot of great ideas and synergy in the room, and I'm really looking forward to 2020. So thank you. Next up, we have communications from the mayor, city officers, and any employees. And working kind of a consideration for our folks who are here today, if you have questions of the mayor about agenda items, let's hold off now, and hear them when the agenda item comes up. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors, and thank you for having us come before you. The black and whites are here. It was not—it was not planned. It just happened when we all arrived at work today. So I—like—the School Committee, and along with the School Committee, I have been working diligently—it's a word you'll hear a lot, because it really is diligent and very hard work—on the budget. The capital budget is done. We are taking a look at it one final time, just to make sure that we have everything in there correctly. Before we take it out, bring it to you, send it to you next week. So as far as I know, it's on time, and you'll get it. As far as the general budget concern—is concerned, that is what we are spending a great deal of our daytime work, and a little bit of our nighttime and weekend work on. It's—there's going to be many challenges this year, and I think we all just have to recognize that in funding a full city budget, which includes schools and city departments. All of the department heads have presented to me. They have done a good job, as good as they can, holding the line, and I appreciate that. It still makes it very hard when we have to go back in and consider what we may have to do to change the budget, cut the budget, and so forth. So we're working hard on trying to figure out what is the wise thing to do. And now the fun begins. In a little bit, I'll let Liz speak to the budget, and perhaps a couple of clarifications on the Unit C contract this evening, since I know that you're also going to second reading on that and moving to a vote, perhaps. As I encouraged you the last time, I hope you do vote this evening, so that these folks can be secure in the knowledge that that a contract has been solidified for them. As far as other things—other—and I have been meeting on the Budget Subcommittee meetings with the School Committee. It's been great to be able to be there. And as Chair Proetti said, we've had a couple of opportunities to talk about this budget, but also the budgets to come in the following years, and how the city can work together along with the School Committee. Communication has been great, and I've greatly appreciated that from the members of the School Committee and the Superintendent. And Director—Budget Director Nimberkow. So as far as the other things that take up our time during the week, besides meeting with residents and other people, we've had a great opportunity to meet with Paul Mark and with Senator Commerford, and give them some items on our wish list. The Public Safety Building Committee has been put in place, and will hold its first meeting tomorrow evening, here, I believe. And the Library Building Committee is moving through their phases. They've had one meeting, and we have another one, I think, the next week. So that's working so far, so good. We have an OPM for the Public Safety Complex. Now we're going to go try to find that earmark for both the anaerobic digester and the cleanup of the Riddell Street site. And as I've been told, earmarks are hard to find. They're written on paper, and somehow they get buried in the State House. So we'll have to go do a little door-knocking, much to my surprise. So we've also tried to do something—our goal is to make the city work better for its citizens. And in order to do that, the right hand within City Hall and other departments needs to know what the left hand is doing from time to time, and how they do their work, and how the departments often interact, and who's responsible for doing—handling whatever interactions they must have. I'm not saying that none of that was ever written down. It was. But it was in the realm, sometimes, of institutional knowledge, too. So if one person left who held all that piece of knowledge, and a new person came in, the new person didn't know what—the right hand was supposed to do. So we asked the department heads in the first week of my being in office to come up with their hand—they're literally—in some cases, probably handwritten—written policies, procedures, how they do their steps, so that we can—the goal is to put together a policies and procedures manual. It sounds dull, but it—I think will really help, so that, you know, somebody needs something done, they know who to go to to get it done. And Dani can speak to that, because she's been ram-rotting that project and other things. So I'll let maybe Liz speak first, and then Dani, and we'll try not—we'll keep it brief.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to segue on what the mayor spoke about, this being a difficult budget. One of the aspects that's creating a difficulty is financial sustainability. When we use one-time revenue—and what do I mean by one-time revenue? That can be free cash or stabilization, since stabilization comes from free cash. When we use that for recurring expenses, mandatory recurring expenses, it creates a financial cliff. So if—for example, whether it's union contracts, or cutting line items that are mandatory expenses, it creates a cliff for the following year, and that's what we're dealing with. Our two-and-a-half property tax increase, it's only $885,000. And our retirement assessment in one year goes up $500,000. So when you have a very large amount of one-time funds that are used to fund recurring expenses, you're going to have a problem. So this is going to be an extremely difficult budget for both the school and the city. So, you know, we do need to work together on this, and we need to come to solutions. I'm glad to hear the Superintendent speak to supporting ratifying—and the School Committee ratifying funds for the IA contract. I do want to clarify just a little information on that. I did some of this with Ways and Means, but prior union contracts for the city fire police DPW, they were not fully funded. As recently as July, and the Police Department had the supervisor's contract, it was only $1,300. That was not the full year of a contract, believe me. And so any of the department heads can speak to you that they were not fully funded. So part of the issue, too—and we're working on communications with the school, but there hadn't been communication on the funding range for the contract until September of 2019. Well, there hadn't been. So, you know, in terms of contract stabilization, you know, we had to use free cash for some mandatory items that were cut, that could have gone to contract stabilization. And then in addition, the meeting where we intended to transfer $200,000 to stabilization did not occur. So in the past, IA contracts were in the range of $50,000, $80,000, maybe. And to not have communication on what the intention was created issues, obviously. And as far as, you know, the general stabilization account, I will say again that was at Ways and Means that the school actually does have more in their revolving accounts, and those are carry-forward accounts. Those are amounts that are left over at the end of the year that are replenished by incoming revenue for the current year. So at this point in time, there is more on the revolving funds. One time, I'm sure it is. It's also one time on the city side with general stabilization. So the question was, why do we need money in general stabilization? I don't know if many of you have been around for this, but there's something called 9C cuts. That is a law where the state can say, you know, "The revenues aren't coming in like we thought. Gosh, we can't give you all the cherry-sheep money this year." And it has happened. There's also wide variations in revenue that can happen from year to year, and we did experience that in FY '19. We did not make the revenue budget. So there are reasons, very solid, and recommended by the Department of Revenues and all the rating agencies, of why you need money in stabilization. Secondly, you also can have expenses. You may have an opportunity for a grant match. Look at Wisdom Way that some of you may have voted on. That is a million-dollar project that we got done for $109,000. That saves the taxpayers a lot of money. But out of all this is what I want to—want you to take home, and I'll be glad to speak with anyone who wants to come in and talk about this. You cannot use one-time revenue to fund recurring expenses. It's like when you inherited, say, $12,000, and you say, "Oh, I can go get a car and pay the payments for a year." Well, the problem is, when that $12,000 goes away and you don't get it again, you still have those car payments. Whereas, if you inherited $50,000 and you just bought the vehicle outright, you wouldn't have those payments. You just—you have to be cognizant of recurring costs. And that is going to be the challenge in this budget. And we are both going to face it, because we are actually approaching our levy ceiling, which can be another conversation for another time. But we are very close. And you cannot go over it. Even if you can go up two-and-a-half, you can't go over the levy ceiling. Even if the two-and-a-half goes over, you can't go over it. So it's an issue, and we need to look at how we can do things better. And I'm not—it's not going to be easy. So thank you for listening. And again, anyone who has questions, call or come in, and I can explain this further, because I know it's difficult, and I know a lot of you are new. So, you know, I'm more than willing to talk to you about it. Thank you.
I get to be the closer on this group. I'll try and lighten it up a little bit. So I'm Danielle Letourneau, the Chief of Staff to the mayor. I'm very pleased to be working with her and this new administration. One of the things I wanted to reiterate was the same thing that Counselor—Council President Stempel said, which was that School-City meeting, where we brought all these folks to the table, and we're discussing this very heavy topic of money, and how to fund our city and our school, along with other challenges that we share, was one of my favorite meetings that we've had so far. And the people—the hard-working professionals— And the people, the hard-working professionals that sat around that table, it was really impressive. So just know that, and the public should know that we're having these hard conversations everywhere, not just here on the council floor once a month. Speaking of communication, the things that the mayor has asked me to work on include those standard operating procedures that she spoke about before. Anybody who's ever had a job before, which is most of you guys, knows that if you come into a place where somebody else has been in charge for 10 years, there's going to be some holes in the written-down language of how we do things. So that's what I've been working on with the folks in the city, the department heads, and some of the folks that work with them on, you know, what are our standard operating procedures? So that the goal there is really to be able to serve the public better, to know where things are, how things work, make sure that it's not a scavenger hunt every time something comes up, figure out how we can get the public engaged, how we can communicate with them. And also, you know, creating other communication vehicles, such as that school-city meeting, creating some procedures for being in touch with constituents and tracking that. It's been a little bit of a challenge during the transition. So I apologize to people in the public who may not have heard back from us. We figured something out today. So we will be getting back in touch with you. But it's been great and gratifying to be able to, you know, hear from constituents. And hopefully, we can start moving kind of our hopes and dreams forward despite all the talk about the public, about the budget. We know that we are scrappy and strong here in Greenfield, and we can do all of that even with our tight budget. So that's my part in this, is to make sure that the mayor can work closely with the finance director for this budget season while I'm kind of holding down the fort with the communications end of things. Thank you.
Any questions? Saying none. Thank you. I did invite...
Thanks again.
Thank you so much. I did invite our chiefs, Chief Hague and Chief Strahan, to speak to us tonight, just by invitation, purely because there's so many new folks. I think it's a good opportunity to hear from them and trying to make it on the theme of communication, trying to make it more of an open-door policy hearing from our department heads outside of the budget season. So this way, we're not just grilling them during the budget. And they so graciously accepted. So at this point in time, I'd like to call Chiefs Hague and Strahan to speak to us.
I'm going to let the fire chief go because he actually prepared, and I'm going to fly, just like I normally do.
I just had a couple of comments. First, thank you for the invite and having us to have the opportunity to speak to everyone. It's great to see city council and the new city council and new faces. So welcome, everybody. Just a couple of things about the fire department. Just to give you an idea of where we're at with the fire department. 2019 was our busiest year ever for call volume. It is the fourth consecutive year that that has been the case. Our call volume keeps going up and up and up. Calls and demands for emergency services keeps going up, and we're happy to meet the demand. We've increased our call volume about 500 calls per year in the last four years combined. So we're seeing a steady increase. Part of that increase is the fire department has taken a more active role in providing the community's emergency medical services. We have a local provider, AMR, which is our primary ambulance. But you may have noticed that Greenfield Fire now has ambulances of its own and has had it for the last four or five years. Our call volume for requests for ambulance services and transports has gone up. Across the board, there is a shortage of ambulances within the county. And we saw that there was a need within the city of Greenfield. And so we started our own ambulance service out of the fire department with the staff that we had, and it's incredibly successful. It is very taxing on the firefighters. They are doing a lot more, but the... I think everybody would agree that we're providing the best state-of-the-art emergency services that we can provide with the resources that we have. So we're very pleased with that. And other than that, the mayor addressed that we are having our first meeting with the Public Safety Building Group. And so we look forward to doing that. And we look forward to discussing our capital needs for next year for the fire department specifically. And it has been for many years has been vehicles. Our vehicle fleet is getting old. Our maintenance costs reflect that. And so we're excited about being able to present to you a very solid plan on some replacement of some very critical pieces of equipment. And that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Counselor Forgé. For the folks at home, and just so you guys know, when you speak into the microphone, that means you're speaking to the folks at home. We might be able to hear you, but they can't. So always try to speak into your microphone. Thank you.
You mentioned the EMS ambulance service that the department provides. Can you tell me the level of training for the fire department staff for the ambulance? And also, is AMR trained in a similar way as well?
That's a great question. So the first part of that question is, when I first got on the department, there were two EMTs, myself and one other. I'm happy to report that all but one member of the Greenfield Fire Department is trained to at least the basic level EMT. We have three folks that are trained to advanced EMT. And then the local provider in town provides paramedic services. So paramedic is basically being able to administer drugs, life-saving drugs, intubation, IVs. So there are different levels, but all but one firefighter in our department is an EMT. We've come a long way.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yeah, Bob, just a clarification. The meeting is tomorrow at the Town Hall, not here. At 5:00 o'clock, correct?
So according to the Town page, it is 5:00 o'clock at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to... I had the time wrong. I wanted to make sure I had the place right. Thanks, Bob.
All right.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. For those who don't know me, I'm Robbie Hig. I'm the police chief. I'm also in charge of the dispatch center of the regional animal control and parking enforcement. My pride and joy. So no, I'm just kidding. They're wonderful people. That was for you, Mayor. So I've been here six years. And when I came here six years ago, we had some pretty definitive plans that I felt I could pull off in a relatively short amount of time, I thought. One was to get our department back to a working order where we had kind of a minimum staffing, which was a change in schedule. And that was achieved very quickly. The bigger plans were to get us out of civil service and to get us accredited, which nobody thought we could pull off. And this year, we did achieve full accreditation on the state level, and we were recognized this year. Civil services, hopefully, are set to fall by the end of this fiscal year. And we'll move forward on that as well. So those were some of the goals that I set with the previous mayor coming in the door. There was obviously some changes that needed to be done in our department, and I think we've worked pretty hard to make those changes. I'm looking forward to civil service being gone to help us with the hiring of a more representative police department for the community of Greenfield, which was pretty limited as far as candidate pools when we were in civil service. So I'm looking forward to that as well. Budgets, like everybody else, you know, we grind, and we do what we can to not put officers out there in danger, to not leave one dispatcher on a shift. We try to keep, at least in parking enforcement, we try to keep to a minimum staffing, which we are now. Certainly, the parking schedule and the fee schedule has helped with that to allow for less employees. And the animal control is just an agreement between three communities to try to keep the cost down. We in Greenfield pay for half of it because we do get more than half of the workload from the other, compared to the other two communities. But they do work with us, and that's kind of where we're at. We've been pretty much steady busy since I've been here, and our overtime budget is impacted every year. As contracts go up, overtime doesn't really change, but the dollar value does. So that's one of the things that's challenging. We're also moving towards, quite honestly, it's more of a social work department than it is a police department these days. And we're constantly training for mental health awareness. We have 69% of our department right now that is currently CIT critical incident trained. We are part of the One Mind campaign for the state. So we are moving towards that. It's not the state, it's the country that's doing it. But we are intending to have 100% of our officers trained in de-escalation and mental health training. So we're at about 69% right now.
Any questions? Saying none.
That is way too easy. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and just, like I said, keeping the door open for communication from department heads. And I'm sure we'll see you again at budget season. Next, can somebody... Or I can... It's actually an opportunity for me to... And I took the pen, so there we go. At this point, we will open our public comment. And thank you so much for bearing with us. We tried to move through that as quickly as possible. I so appreciate all of you coming again tonight. First, we have Susan Voss. Yes, Susan, welcome. And you know the drill. Name an address, please. Thank you.
I do. My name is Susan Voss. I live at 158 Log Plain Road in Greenfield. I'm an instructional assistant at the Academy of Early Learning, where I get to play with three, four, and five-year-olds every day, and it is the best job ever. I'm also the Unit C representative. And I'd like to update you a little bit about the stalled contract and what this means to us. As a whole, the group of IAs are angry and frustrated. These past seven months with no action on funding has left our members feeling unappreciated, unrespected. And loyalty goes both ways. People are leaving our schools. Good people are leaving our schools. As we're now over halfway through the school year with still no funding, many IAs are looking for employment elsewhere, both for the remainder of this year and for next year. And positions aren't always getting filled. This is shortchanging our kids. Creating good teams in the classroom is important to staff and kids, but it's hard with lots of turnover. Staff feel it, and worst of all, our kids feel it. This should be about the kids and their education. This should be important to the community as a whole. What we do is important work. Greenfield needs to step up and show our community that you care for the schools and want to make them better. You need to show the community that our kids are important. And you need to show us that education is a respected position. What we do every day, we do because we love the kids. We want to keep doing it, but we need a living wage. So please fund our contract responsibly and soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Doug Selwyn. Was I close? Nope, names are important. So how do you pronounce your name? Selwyn.
I was an I.
Selwyn. Thank you.
So I am Doug Selwyn, 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. And I'm going to echo what you just heard and maybe add a little to it. It has been six months plus since the IA agreement was negotiated, and still there's no money or not enough money. There was money when the negotiations took place, as I understand it, but it disappeared. I don't know where it went. Maybe somebody does. We don't think of educators like we do workers in other fields, so assume somehow they should behave differently, and we often treat them differently. But these instructional assistants are school workers, and they're not being paid. I'll agree they should be paid, but that hasn't moved the needle at all. And even if the council approves what's on the table tonight, that's still not a full response to what the contract negotiated offers them. And from what I understand, the expectation is the school is supposed to pay the rest out of its already inadequate budget. In most other labor situations, workers would be, at this point, ready to strike. And while these workers should as well, in my opinion, schools can't run without them. They work with the most vulnerable students and make it possible for all students to have the opportunity to learn. Without them, the schools would not function or certainly not function well. These are our children who we say we value. And if that's true, we should then pay the people who work with them a living wage to treat them with respect and with honor, which includes paying them what was negotiated. I fear that because they care so much about the children with whom they work, there may be some less urgency to solve this beyond sending thoughts and prayers to them. As we know, that does not pay rent or mortgages or feed their families. We must do better, and we must do it now. We know that even some of these loyal, loving school workers are leaving. The morale is low, as you just heard, and they can't continue as things are. When they leave, the children, the children are not so well-served. The schools are less than they could be. And while some will blame the schools for not doing all they could and should, it most certainly is not their fault. And families looking for good schools may think twice about Greenfield. It's a good investment. It's a necessary investment. Please fund them and fund them now. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. So just a reminder, we do take Greenfield residents first. I'm not going to... I'm going to skip over you, but I will come back to you. So next, we have Garrett O'Brien.
Good evening. My name is Garrett O'Brien. I live at 72 High Street, Apartment 2 in Greenfield. I'm an instructional assistant at GHS and the RISE program. I'm also a member of the Unit C bargaining committee and the GHS Unit C building rep. Here we are on February 19th, 2020, a few long months from last November's school committee ratification of the Unit C contract. Every persuasive point regarding funding Unit C has been made to you by now, including much of what you've heard tonight. So I'll try to be brief. We've paid attention. We've been here. We've implored you to make the right decision to responsibly fund Unit C contracts with city-side funds exclusively. As some of us have pointed out, we're tired of having to do so. You're all probably tired of hearing us, too. Yet we'll be in the seemingly endless loop until a responsible resolution is made by you all. So here we are again, not because we enjoy it, but because the need for the Unit C raise is so overwhelming that it's impossible to sit idly by. We're here to get better compensation for coworkers that regularly cut short their lunch breaks without hesitation to ensure the safety of children, for folks who have countlessly reshaped their occupational role beyond the scope of their job description to benefit not themselves, but their students. We're here for coworkers that are putting themselves in harm's way daily to maintain the safety of the kiddos they devotedly serve. I leave you with that short list of... I leave you with that short list that covers a fraction of the many sacrifices that I've witnessed in only two years as a member of Greenfield's Unit C. We, Greenfield paraprofessionals, act on behalf of the needs of our students, whom we tirelessly represent and advocate for. Now we're asking that you, the elected Greenfield City Council, the very folks that represent the will and best interests of the people of Greenfield, act on our behalf and resolve our acknowledged, documented, and worse yet, ongoing need. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Next, we have Shannon Eaton.
Hi, I'm Shannon Eaton. I live at 31 Norwood Street. Is there anything else I'm supposed to say before I go?
That's perfect.
I feel very uncomfortable speaking in public. First of all, I am a teacher in the Greenfield Public Schools and a parent of a child who goes to the Greenfield Public Schools. Part of why I'm speaking is I fear for what my students currently face, the fact that we have lost IAs from last year to this year. We've been short, and we are losing two more when we come back on Monday. And also, like, what it will be like for... And also, like, what it will be like for my child when she gets longer in the schools, when she gets to the grades that I teach on in the middle school. I do think that the city funds is where the money should come from. I know you've heard that. I know that if we keep taking it from schools, then we're going to just keep losing staff, and we're already short, and the children are our future. I'm here because I love children, so I just want to leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Shannon. Next, we have Maria Burge.
Good evening, everyone. Last meeting, I invited the council to go to a Moore Tour gathering. And on Wednesday, February 5th, we gathered almost 500, not 300, like the recorder reported, almost 500 at the Second Congregational Church to support the National Moore Tour and raise awareness around issues surrounding our poor and low-wealth brothers and sisters. As some of you know, I am a missionary of the poor. I have made this Moore Tour a part of my mission. This is a movement that votes. We intend to focus on the importance of the census and educate folks around why it is important to register to vote. We must educate ourselves on the issues that impact the seniors, the veterans, and the low-wealth citizens of Greenfield. The national organization chose Greenfield because Franklin County is the poorest county in Massachusetts. And I have learned so much about the importance of the census, how we get their money. I have been watching Greenfield not grow from 17,000, but I know a lot of new faces. I've been here over 40 years, and I see the changes in the increase, and I see the decrease in our services. So, please join us and educate ourselves on the importance of the census and of voting. Thank you.
And Maria, can you state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Maria Burge, 29 Garfield Street, Greenfield, Massachusetts, at your service.
Thank you, Maria. And now, please carry on. Now, I'd like to welcome our friends from other communities. Katerina Pavlov. Did I do that right? Pavlu. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Katerina Pavlu. I'm an instructional assistant here in Greenfield, and I live in 122 Monaco Street in Turners Falls. I wanted to come up and say, I can't think, I can't fathom how anyone thinks it's okay to fund the Unit C contract partly from our education funds. It's a con, that our education funds are put together for our students, and it's basically stealing from our students. And I want to get paid, but not on the backs of our kids. So, when you go to vote tonight for our contract, I really want you guys to think hard about how it's going to get funded, and if there's any way it can come from the city fully or majoritarily, it'd be terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Katerina. And last, we have Karen Dodd.
Good evening. I'm Karen Dodd, 99 Fourth Street in Turners Falls. I'm an IA at the Greenfield High School. I've been in this district since 2001. I wish I had brought a description of my job to share with you all, because it's pretty simple, and it looks pretty easy. But what you don't know, and what is not on that paper or in that description, is what we may or may not face every day. I get up, I go to work, just like all of you. Everyone behind me gets up, goes to work. What we may face is getting kicked, getting punched, our hair pulled, bitten, spit at, numerous other things. I myself have one concussion. These are the things that we face every day and more. There's broken bones every single day. But we get up and we do it. We do it because those kids depend on us every day. And when we go in, we have to do it with a smile, keep things in our bubble. Those kids are yelling and screaming obscenities at us. We do it. I don't think there's too many other jobs out there that require this. So, please, figure this out. I'm not going anywhere, and my kids know that. I will not leave them because they need consistency in their day. And I am one person that those kids know they can count on, as well as many people behind me. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. At this time, I'm going to open our public hearing. It is 8:01. And I will ask Vice President Wheeler to read our second readings and the public hearing notice.
Thank you, Madam President. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Char, Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 19, 2020, at 7:00 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, to receive public input on the following. Approved payment of $664.80 for FY19 invoice for Partex Solutions. Appropriate $169,099 for Greenfield Education Association Unit C contract. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, February 19, 2020, at 7:00 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Ashley Stempel, Greenfield City Council President. City Council Second Reading, February 19, 2020. Approved payment of $664.80 FY19 invoice for Partex Solutions. Appropriate $169,099 for Greenfield Education Association Unit C contract.
Thank you. And next, we're going to move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Item 1, may I please have Vice President Wheeler also read that motion?
The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegartner, and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30b, Section 12b, ordered that the City Council approve a three-year contract with the option of two individual one-year renewal options for the disposal of trash between the City of Greenfield and WM. Community Echo Power LLC.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been made, second. Report from committee.
Thank you. This received a unanimous positive recommendation. As we all know, I think the trash and recycling situation is volatile now and impacting the budget, but we felt that this, this contract was the best we would, would do at the moment.
Any discussion? Counselor Mayo? Please speak into a microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a question about, on the motion itself, it says disposal of trash. Does that mean that city employees are going to continue to collect it?
Correct. That is true. So, we are maintaining our trash services as are. However, we pay a service to remove them once they're collected to Springfield and then thereafter.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Counselor Gwin, page 49.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the City of Greenfield as written in the Strike Through Attachment Heretoo and described as follows. Article 45-1, Creation Purpose Organization, Strike Director of Central Maintenance, and in its place, insert Director of Public Works. Strike Article 45.2 in its entirety, and in its place, no, and further amend the index of code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield.
Motion's been made, second. Report from committee, please.
This received a positive unanimous recommendation. This meeting was, once again, a great follow-up to our prior discussion, and not only did we meet with the Director of Public Works, we met with the Director of Central Maintenance. And President Stempel was actually there for that portion of the meeting, and I basically, pretty straightforward, as you know how I handle things, and I said to both of them, what's wrong with this? Do you like it? Do you like it? And we went from that point on. We saw every piece of this as both a positive for both departments. They're based on location of where they can work together, the interaction between both departments, and from that, we reached the determination that it was a positive move for Greenfield. It was a more economical move for Greenfield, and it was something that both directors were in favor of, and the transition to one having say within that department.
Great. Thank you very much. Very thorough, Counselor Gwin. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Page 51, Vice President Wheeler.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegartner, and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30b, Section 12b, approve a 20-year term for up to five municipal rooftop solar projects with Select Energy LLC.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been made, second. Report from committee.
This also received a unanimous positive recommendation from Ways and Means. As your packet notes, this would, this assessed various, all actual, actually, it assessed all the municipal buildings for suitability to host solar panels, and five of them were chosen as appropriate. Director Collins was here, but it's her day off, so we sent her home. So, if anyone has questions, I will attempt to answer them, but Ways and Means, like I said, unanimous positive.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. At this time, I'm going to, I didn't, no one signed up on the sheet, so at this time, I'm going to close our public hearing at 8:09. And Vice President Wheeler, page 97.
I move that it be ordered that the sum of $169,099 be appropriated from the Special Education Stabilization Account to assist in funding wage provisions of a new contract agreement with the Greenfield Education Association, Unit C.
Motion's been made, second. Report from committee, please.
This received robust discussion in committee. There are many details and exigencies, but the committee recommendation was unanimous positive.
Thank you. Counselor Ricketts.
Due to a conflict of interests, I need to recuse myself for the rail for this question.
Thank you. Discussion, Counselor Dolan.
I would just like to thank everybody who came out tonight and also everybody who's been coming to our meetings. I know this has been a hard process. I also just wanted to clarify, I don't necessarily agree with the source of these funds, but the council doesn't have a lot of power in terms of either raising the amount appropriated or, or changing the funding source at this point. We're really reliant on orders from the mayor, which, at this point, I think were actually from a previous mayor. So, my priority is to get this funded. I certainly agree with the sentiments that were expressed tonight, though.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Mayo?
Hi, excuse me. I just wanted to echo Counselor Dolan's statement and also think it's high time that this contract get funded now that we have a source. I, too, am not happy about where we're getting the money. I'd rather not see the school take a hit at all. I'd like to see, there are a lot of questions I have regarding this, but I have, I'll save those questions for Liz. I'll make a meeting with you to talk about those issues. But I'm fearful about where some of the futures contracts are going to be coming from. And I'll just say that. So, be expecting a phone call based on that kind of a discussion. I do feel like, having been a union president before, not in this area, but in, in mental health, I can certainly understand why some of these people get physically assaulted. I myself was physically assaulted. My nose is broken, contusions, you name it. I worked for the Department of Mental Retardation at the time, so I got hit and beat up a lot. So, I can understand what the work you do and how important it is, and it is high time that your contract get funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mayo. Counselor Gwin?
I just want to say, on behalf of a counselor that is back into the flow of, of city doings, and I was not involved in the beginning negotiations of where you got to at this point, but as I look at a couple of things that have been said over the, my two meetings, one is, I think we always have to keep in mind, we are one city. You know, we hear the city side and the, you know, whether it's the police department, the fire department, the school department, we are one city. So, the money is, is a finite pool, and where it comes from is a negotiation between the people that we were talking to today. And it sounds like we're on the right track with bringing people together to discuss where one city gets enough money to fulfill it. Also, in that same thought, these people bargained in good faith. They, they, they did what they were supposed to. To me, it's not where it's coming, but when they're going to get the money they were promised, that's more important to me. And I feel that in any situation, if there was an emergency situation in the school department, the fire department, that's what we're here for. You come back and tell us that you need something when you need it. We'll look at it and make sure it gets filled. We're not going to say, well, we spent that money to fulfill a, a contract, and now we don't have it. When you need it, we'll find it. We always have. I've been involved for 20 years. Get this contract funded, let the school figure out, and work with the town to make sure that it gets done, and it gets done correctly. Thank you.
Counselor Gilmore? Move that we call the question. This is non-debatable. So, all those in favor of calling the question? Opposed? Raise your hand if you're a no. I'm also a no. Opposed? Seeing none? All right. So, the motion passes. At this point, we will At this point, we will move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions?
I'd also like to vote.
In favor?
Twelve, yes.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. I did just want to take a moment and thank everybody for being here on their vacation week. My mother was a paraprofessional for a certain amount of time at what was North Parish School, and she would come home with bruises and hits. And no matter what happened that day, she was so loyal to her students, too. And so, thank you for what you do. Now go home and celebrate the rest of your break. Or stay. Thank you very much. Vice President Wheeler, page 105, please.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY 20-48, accept Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44b of the general laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is required or created as provided under said act. That the amount of such surcharge on real property shall be 1% of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing in fiscal year 2022, and that the city hereby accepts the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3e of said act. Property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or lower moderate income senior housing in the city, as defined in Section 2 of said act, for $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property, and for $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class III commercial property and Class IV industrial property, as defined in Section 2a of said Chapter 59, which was tabled at the December 18, 2019 City Council meeting.
And just to verify, so this vote is to take this from the table? So just like we practiced a bazillion times last month? So you're voting to take it from the table? Is that clear? And then we'll discuss and vote thereafter, all right? So motion's been made. I heard a second. Raise your hand if you second the motion. Counselor Mayo, thank you very much. So all those in favor of taking this from the table?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Raise your hands, aye. Thank you. So the motion is on the table. Discussion. Or I guess, you didn't hear this at the past Ways and Means meeting, did you? Oh, you did. Report from committee, please.
Ways and Means took this up at the December Subcommittee meeting, and it received a mixed positive recommendation.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Forgé. Please speak into a microphone. Thank you.
We need more microphones. Could I please ask, Counselor Wheeler, could you explain the vote? It was a split vote. And could you tell us who voted in favor, who voted against, and what the rationale was?
Certainly, I can attempt to summarize. The positive votes were by myself, Counselor Dolan, and Counselor Mayo. The votes in opposition were Counselor Alice and Counselor Mass. Personally, I am of the opinion, and I'm going to speak for myself here, because it's hard to summarize the opinions of Subcommittee members. I feel that the Community Preservation Act is a way to enact something close to a progressive tax that essentially puts money in the bank and allows you to spend from savings, rather than continuing to borrow for most capital projects, which invariably ends up only funding the most essential, leaving recreation, and, as we've seen, affordable housing by the wayside. If I may speak to the opposition, I would summarize by saying that there was general disagreement with the idea of any additional taxation or surcharge being passed on to the community at this time, that the community is generally highly burdened already, and that to further burden them would be inappropriate.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore.
Just wanted to clarify that this, if we vote to pass this, this doesn't necessarily take effect. This puts it on the ballot so that the residents have a chance to weigh in and decide whether or not that's what they would like to do.
Correct. That is the next step. So by passing this here tonight, we're putting this on the ballot in November, I believe, in order for the community to vote on whether to move this forward or not. Counselor Disorder.
I have some concerns about putting this on the ballot. It's very, nobody could be more in favor of affordable housing than myself. I did a lot of research on this. There are three things that it's used for. Affordable housing, preservation of, like, land preservation, and historic preservation. I think the timing is difficult. Number one, we've just asked the taxpayers to be funding the library, which we all worked very hard to have that pass, and I'm delighted with. I think that a significant, a significant amount of the population is going to be exempt from this. But I have concerns, I asked like 40 or 50 people in my precinct how they felt about this, they did not know what it was. So the exemption form itself, I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, but it's four pages long. It's the same for every municipality throughout the state. Some of them are requiring your tax, your W2s and your taxes to be filed along with it. And I printed it out. Myself, I actually would probably qualify for that, and just from the title of it alone, I wouldn't want to fill it out and send it into the town with all of my information, low-income persons, lower moderate income seniors. I don't know how many of the people that actually qualify for it, for the exemption, will know how, where, and how to apply for it. So that was one concern that I had. Also, I felt as if we needed a little bit more research on it. I went through most of the municipalities that actually had it, and most of them had an employee, someone that was in charge of writing for this. They either had a full-time or a half-time person, a city manager, that was paid a full-time or half-time salary. And I just had more concerns about it. Was this an exemption that people were going to have to apply for annually? What impact was this going to have on the assessors, the accounting department? Were we looking at, you know, MJ or hiring another employee? I can see enormous benefits of, an enormous benefit of it. I don't think that the tax match is what it used to be. But I wonder how many people here have done, you know, the research before we decided to put this on, to have everybody weigh in, you know, are we going to do a good job in the education if we don't know, if we don't understand it all ourselves? So I just have concerns.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Hirschfeld.
Hi. I lived in Waltham for about 29 years, and Waltham, Massachusetts, has a Community Preservation Act. And it's been fairly successful, though it's been a struggle to get the city to come up with the funds, to spend the funds, I should say, when it's needed. But as far as the citizens go, and as far as maintaining this, I don't think they have hired anyone to do that. I believe it was all done in-house. And it's been a really good program, that affordable housing has been able to be built. I was involved in that process with a community development corporation for over five years, and it's something that we could do here.
Thank you. Counselor Gwynn?
I want to echo a little bit what Counselor Disorder said a few minutes ago about timing. I think timing's an issue with this. When I was going door-to-door this year, collecting signatures for the first time in a long time, I had one mandate, and that was tax burden. People in total fear of being able to meet their taxes in the future, regardless of socioeconomic level. And it wasn't just one, it was all. I'm in precinct two, and it wasn't like some people thought it was fine, everyone was concerned. When I did my homework on this, a couple of the points that I found the most concerning was if we were a one percenter, much like your 401k plan, you don't get full matching if you're a 1%. The more percentage that's gone, the more funds that are matched. The 1% levels have been matched at about 22%. 22% of that match, so we're going to burden our taxpayers to get 22 cents on a dollar, which doesn't have to continue, it can change, it can go up, it can go down, it can stop. Second of all, there's those four allowable uses that were spoken of, which was affordable housing, historic preservation, open space, and outdoor recreation. One of the problems I had was, you can use this money to acquire them, you can use the money to create them, but you can't use the money on three of four to support them. So if you were to use this money to add things to outdoor recreation, if you were to use this money to use historic preservation, if you were to use it to do something with open space, it then becomes a tax burden, because if you're hiring people to run this recreation you put in, if you're looking to maintain it, you can't use that money after it's built. So then, it's great that we're going to use this money for things that we haven't been able to fund, but at the same time, we then burden the same taxpayers that we gave a voluntary tax to. That just doesn't seem, I just don't think it's a good time for this. We didn't jump on in the beginning. If it continues, this can be looked at again. I just think with the situation we're in right now, the tax burden, where our people are, I don't think it's good timing to even approach the people to bring this forward at this time.
Thank you. Please refrain from clapping in the audience. Thank you. Counselor Jarvis?
Yeah, I won't echo too long here, but I just want to go on to say that I've visited two-thirds of the voters in my precinct, and I heard from most of them saying, we're sick and tired of taxes, we're sick and tired of them going up, we're sick and tired of being nickled and dimed. I heard it pretty much on my walk for the past couple of days when this was posted on the agenda, from people in my neighborhood. They're not for it. With the state of affairs in our nation, our state, and our town, I can't see putting this off to 2022, not having a crystal ball to be able to say, oh, this is going to be great, our taxes are going to level off, they're going to go down, and people are going to be able to afford this, everybody's going to be honky-dory with it and happy and go lucky. Because none of us have a crystal ball. We don't know what the state of Greenfield's going to be, we don't know what the state of the nation is going to be, and we don't know what the state of our state's going to be in the next few fiscal years. And to put this forward, number one, without fully educating our voters on it, I mean, it is a pretty cumbersome piece of document that we need to do an educational part of it, I feel, if it goes to a ballot. And I don't, I really don't think that the taxpayers of Greenfield are ready to be taking out a new tax at this time. We have a library, we have a public safety building, we have some contracts that are going to need some funding for raises. And it's going to come out of the taxpayers' money. And to tax them again, you can call it a levy, which they do, it's still another tax. And quite frankly, people are getting sick and tired of being taxed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And I haven't, I'm trying not to, I'm not skipping over folks, I'm just saying if folks who haven't spoken already want to speak, and if not, then sure. And I know that Mayor, Counselor Forgé, has been raising her hand very diligently. Would you still like to speak?
Thank you very much. It is true that this has been around for a long time. I think a lot of the things I've heard here this evening makes sense on both sides of the aisle. The question that I have, and maybe somebody could really clarify it for me, is, are we asking the taxpayers to tax themselves? All right, and this would be outside of the margin of two and a half, and it would, would it go away? Would it not go away? It talks about three years, what happens on the fourth year? And what is the state's obligation? In other words, you'll have to excuse me, my experience has been that I always don't trust what the state is going to say about the revenue that comes our way. If they're promising us 1%, 2%, or 3%, can they arbitrarily turn around and say, we don't have the revenue this year, so we're not going to give you 1%, we're going to give you 0.75%. We're not going to give you 3%, we're going to give you 1%. And again, what people are saying here this evening about, the only way that this all makes sense is to really focus on the housing creation, because that's where the funds in continuous years can be used. But the creation of new things, again, puts another burden on taxpayers. So you're asking taxpayers to tax themselves, and then you're asking them to pay for the maintenance upgrade, personnel management costs, anything that comes back that is not going to be covered under the terms that Boston dictates. Thank you. Thank you.
At first, I thought your question was rhetorical, and I didn't realize it was a real question. I know that Vice President Wheeler was likely to speak, and maybe he can answer some of your questions as well.
Thank you. We did go through a rigorous education process when Ways and Means looked at this item. We had a representative from the eastern part of the state take questions from us. There is written into the Community Preservation Act, a body of 10 members that would be created upon passage, that would be in charge of dispersing these funds. Administration should be handled by them, it's inappropriate for a city official manager or anyone to handle it beyond simply the billing and the exemption portion. To speak to dispersment from the state, the 1% is always going to be there, because it is is, it is a surcharge assessed on the property owner. The match will fluctuate. And that was looked at this past year by the state. The process, as I understand it, is that there is a first-round match, and that a community such as Greenfield, and specifically Greenfield, receives priority due to its income level. The match there, the word is that it may be up to 50 cents on the dollar. It may be the 22 cents on the dollar that Counselor Gwynn mentioned. Could be even less. But if we were to pass at 3%, then there would be a further round of dispersment, which could potentially get it closer to the 100% match that the state strives for. As far as public education, this does require a significant public education campaign, and that would happen were this to go on the ballot. The state, there are, rather, there are Community Preservation Act officials throughout the state who exist to educate the public during a ballot process such as this. I would also assume that opponents would come out, like with any ballot process. From my standpoint, I do not necessarily, I would not necessarily expect this to pass. When I vote, I'm going to vote two things. I'm going to vote based on whether or not I think it's a good decision for the city fiscally, and I'm going to vote based on whether I am entirely sure that I want to deprive the citizens of the chance to weigh in on this. I'll say that as Chair of the Capitol Improvements Committee, I voted no on the skate park this year. I campaigned on the skate park, but I voted no on it because I didn't think that building a library and a fire station and a skate park should all happen in the same year. So I hear and agree with so many of the concerns around raising taxes at all. But what I come down to is that if this money had been set aside, then maybe it would have been appropriate for the skate park. Maybe it would have been appropriate to facilitate the building of some affordable housing, which so often needs an array of incentives to make it happen. And the last thing that I come down to is that this would be $20 on a $200,000 home. That would be the yearly surcharge. And that's presuming that you don't qualify and fill out an exemption form. So that's where I stand. I'd like to put it before the people, but I hear all the other concerns as well.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan.
I'd like to just speak briefly in favor of this. I think what we're asking here is we are asking the people of Greenfield whether they would like us to add an additional tax. And I think that's actually the best way to tax people. This is actually, I think, kind of a brilliantly written law in that it incentivizes the creation of things that people value. So I think it would be irresponsible of us not to give the voters the opportunity to do this calculation for themselves and balance the things that they value in terms of housing, in terms of open space, with the cost. This is really one of the, unfortunately, one of the only tools that we have that does anything approaching progressive taxation at the municipal level. So I think we should give folks the opportunity to weigh in on that.
Thank you. Anybody else who hasn't spoken? Counselor Mayo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to speak in favor of this. I think this is, this is something that is talked about a lot in terms of where can we find the funds for low-cost housing? Where do we begin? How do we start? Where, I mean, this is one area where we can start. So just like some of the other counselors here, I'm coming down in favor of some of the things that I hear all the time, people talking about is there's not enough low-cost housing. How can we begin to get those things coming into Greenfield? What's the mechanism? How we can do it? Here's the mechanism right here. And if they choose not to, they can vote no. I'm in favor of bringing it to the taxpayers and eventually have them make the decision. But at least not, to not present it is a disservice to the taxpayer. That's how I feel.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Counselor Ricketts.
Yeah, I just feel that, you know, we received this like at the end of last year, and it was just put in like really quickly, you know, as it is right now. And, you know, to hear that they have people who are really proficient in the state who go around and talk about this for it being put on the ballot, that probably would have been great when it got introduced into our city, is to have someone like that talking. I mean, the example that was brought up tonight was Waltham, number one. Could it be any much further than apples and oranges? And then everything that testified to shows what the concern is all about. Like you're saying, they're having so much trouble getting the money out, it being spent on different projects and stuff. And so that part all fell apart in Waltham, too. So I'm just not sure. I just felt like I wish that for us to make a good decision to put it on the ballot for our citizens, it would have been so good to have more of this information come to full council, and then when we vote to do it, it would be okay. Right now, it'll just be a hustle from now to November. And then who's going to, who is going to be the one? Who is going to be in charge of the educating piece of it? What's the group that's going to be pushing this through and setting up the meetings? And is it the council's job? Are we having the meetings? Or is it the person who brought it forward to the table, and we put them in charge? I mean, I just felt like it's not even really well thought out about how this process is going to go. So when people come to us and speak and say, "This is just another tax and stuff," I just want to be able to say so much more about it and talk about other communities. We had that one person come before us who was from a community that had it, and he could not answer any of the questions that council was asking. He was just so unsure of it all. And so that did not work out at all. That was a huge fail. So I just wish that we did our homework better, so when we say we want to bring this forward, it's not because we personally want it or don't want it. It's because we thoroughly understand it. And I don't feel like that's totally the way it is right now. And so this is just difficult to me, just the whole manner from beginning to now of just pushing it through without more discussion and especially right at a time. And that's what, I will tell Counselor Forgji, what some of the no votes were about last year was it was a vote at a time that the new council would be starting the next month. And so it would be like on their table, and they weren't here yet or anything. And so that's what the whole tabling was about, was to take time so we showed that we totally understood what we were putting forward and why.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoke? Circling back, I saw Counselor Jarvis's hand.
Yeah, just real quickly. So the only thing that I really understood was that the 1% was a guarantee from our taxpayers, but the state doesn't give us any other guarantee what they're going to give us. So our only for-sure money is the money that's going to come out of our hard work and citizens, and then the state's going to decide, eh, maybe we have the money, maybe we don't. Is that correct? Is that what I heard? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore, and then Counselor Disorga.
My microphone is really loud, so I'm going to leave it here. But I wanted to point out that this is something that was actually recommended in the Sustainable Master Plan. So people in our community have already done a lot of homework on this, and they've been trying to get it onto the council for a while. And I know that when Rudy Reno was on the city council, this is something that she and I had spoken about at length, months and months in the past. But it never felt like the right time to bring it forward because there were always so many burning issues that were before the council. So I know that she wanted to do it during her tenure, and that's why it came up at the last minute, because there were just too many other things. I'm sure, I don't want to speak for her, but I'm sure she'd be happy to go educate the community on the issue. But I think it would be inappropriate for the council to do so, especially since we're going to vote to either put it on the ballot or not to put it on the ballot. I think it would be, it would look like a conflict of interest for us to go around sort of proselytizing to our neighbors. I think that that should be outside of the council.
Counselor Disorga.
So I looked through every community that had this, and they did wonderful things. Absolutely. It was terrific. Wonderful, wonderful recreation things, a lot of historic preservation. I think about 20% of it was affordable housing. I just actually have a question before I vote one way or another. Do we anticipate on, from town leadership, and actually, I should be directing this to you, President Stempel, do we know if this will, if we're going to need somebody that's going to take this job over to be doing this? So I don't want to be asking the mayor or Liz Gilman without speaking to you first. And do we know about annually filing for the exemption? And if we are going to be requiring people's tax records? I just have to know that before I vote one way or another. Because it looked to me like every community that I read had at least hired a part-time person to oversee that. And I just would like to have all of the knowledge first. That's all. Thank you.
As far as I know, there is no plan to do that in the works right now. I'll be as objective as possible. So the answer to you is no, as far as I know. Of course, I would give Mayor Weedgarner all the credit in the world because she has a lot of other fish to fry at the moment versus creating a plan for maintaining this, I guess, this tax that may or may not come through. So the short answer is no. Counselor Gwynn, and I, sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Counselor Gwynn, thank you. This will just be brief. In your packet on page 110, there were questions submitted by the Ways and Means Committee to the assessors, the Greenfield Assessors Office. And one of the questions was, "How much estimated staff time would it take to administer the CPA?" And the answer was, "Experience in other communities suggests that from the Assessor's Office perspective, the time required to administer the CPA is small. The CPA surcharge is automatically computed by the city's tax collection software. As assessors, we anticipate 10 to 20 annual CPA exemption applications requiring two to four hours annually to review and process a greater impact would likely be borne by the city's accounting office."
Sure, please. Join the party.
So from what I understand, it isn't always an easy billing, especially with munis. So it likely will require additional work. The extent of it, I can't put my finger on. But they're just our issues with our particular software and getting the billing done. And that's what we've heard from communities who have munis and have the CPA. So, you know, I wouldn't necessarily say that's a game changer on this, a consideration, but I think we're pretty innovative in figuring out how to get things done.
And so, thank you. Counselor Gwynn.
I just wanted to kind of go over something that was brought out by a couple of counselors, and that's when they kept saying that it would be an injustice to not bring it before the voters. Let me just point out one thing. This is a rare situation where part of the process is to have a vote by the citizens. But legislation by referendum in Greenfield is a slippery slope to slide down. We have more representation for this size municipality than any other. With 13 counselors, most towns run on five, seven. 13 is kind of unheard of. So that really gives us a better sampling of our precincts and people to be able to come and make decisions that we don't constantly go back and ask for referendum-style voting because we could go back to town meeting if that's what we wanted to do. But the idea is that we were making representations for, you know, the precincts and people. This one's mandated, so it's a little bit different. But we just have to watch if that's what we're going to do because you also, if we're going to start bringing things as referendum, we have to decide whether we're going to listen to them or not listen to them because just because they're voted in one way or the other doesn't mean that this council or a council in the past has followed that referendum mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer. Please use a microphone so the folks at home can hear your voice. Thanks.
Your objection about referendums is irrelevant in this case because it's required that it go to the voters. Am I right about that? Yeah. And then the other thing is, this is a progressive tax, which means we're soaking the rich to maybe build some affordable housing. In general, that's the kind of tax I would like.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Singnan, I'm going to speak. So I heard a few counselors say the word homework kept coming up. We tabled and pushed this vote to this month in order to give counselors, new and old, ample time to do homework. And so I don't understand the conversation being put forth, saying that there wasn't time to do homework. We didn't do our homework. Start doing your homework. Second, what's exciting and tempting about this to me is having money in our bank and not having to borrow. It's the same analogy that Director Gilman gave before about buying a car. Isn't it great to just buy one outright and not have to pay the interest? Yes, I look forward to someday if I could ever do that. So that's exciting to me, and that makes tons of sense. What boils down to me is about timing. I do believe that this is about timing for myself. And I keep quoting this November 2019 DOR City and Town Report that states that residential and open space is exponentially shouldering the cost of municipal expenses across the state. It's not just Greenfield, it's everywhere. That's being shifted from CIP... That's being shifted from CIP, commercial industrial, over to residential just because Massachusetts is not making the revenue that we once were. Businesses either moving out or just not being as prosperous as it once before. So for me, that's a lot. To me, like, yes, we're asking residents to tax themselves, but I just keep hearing, when are you going to fix the tax and da-da-da? So I just think it's a timing thing. And the other concern for me is exemption is a process that those who likely will not know about the process will be the ones who need the process. It's not a process that we're doing for them. They'll have to do it on their own. And a lot of those people who need the exemption don't feel comfortable going into City Hall to begin with. They're not like us, sitting here behind the table who think and geek out over policy. Or, like I said, they just, for whatever reason, they don't feel comfortable going into City Hall. I have to encourage my neighbors to go in and have their property abated. They don't even know about that process, and they're afraid to do it. They're ashamed to do it. So I think this is great. I do think it's about timing. And so I just, there's good things on both, there's good on one side, and then there's considerations on the other, and I trust everybody to make the right decision for themselves. All right. I'm going to do a roll call vote for this one, please. Sorry, didn't mean to ambush you.
So you are, a yes vote will put this on the November ballot. A no vote will put this not on the ballot. Yes, and so with a roll call vote, if you feel unprepared to make your decision, you can ask the clerk to circle back to you.
Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor Gwynn?
No.
Counselor Disorga?
No.
Counselor Boddy?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
This will be on the November ballot. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, so Vice President Wheeler, page 111, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approve the payment of prior year FY19 invoice for ParTech Solutions in the amount of $664.80 to be paid from the FY20 Parking Department budget.
Motion's been made second. Report from committee, please.
This was a unanimous positive recommendation. Director Gilman spoke to us and reminded us of how there was a invoice from the same company that went into a spam folder, and that needed to be paid on schedule, and it was, if you recall. But they were proactive and requested any further billing, and that's what you see before you. And I just note that it requires a nine-tenths vote.
You stole the wind from underneath my wings. No, you're totally fine. Thank you for the reminder. So for everybody to approve this, nine-tenths of a vote. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Counselor Gilmore, please. Page 113.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council hereby approves the attached presidential primary election warrant for March 3, 2020, and further authorizes the City Council President's a signed set warrant on behalf of the City Council.
Second.
And, oh, this wasn't a punishment, I swear. You have to read the warrant.
Franklin, what's this SS? What's that short for? Does anyone know?
Yeah, it's a legal device.
So like subset or subsection? Okay.
It's a legal device.
Okay. So either of the constables of the city of Greenfield, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify one of the inhabitants of said city who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at Greenfield High School Gymnasium, 21 Bar Avenue, Precinct 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, on Tuesday, the third day of March 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following purpose: to cast their votes at the presidential primary for the candidates of political parties for the following offices. Presidential preference for this Commonwealth: State Committee Man, Hampshire-Franklin-Worcester District; State Committee Woman, Hampshire-Franklin-Worcester District; Town Committee for Greenfield. Hair fail not and make return of this warrant in your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting. I'm sorry, guys. Given under our hands this 19th day of February 2020.
Thank you. What's that? What's that? Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Counselor Mayo, thank you for the second. I'm assuming there's no discussion for this, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Counselor Gwynn, please, on page 115.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Chump Charter Section 2-10 accepts the following temporary appointment by the mayor to the Board of Registars Doris Cowdery for a term to expire March 31, 2020.
Motion's been made second. This actually did not go to committee. This was at the request of the mayor. As you can see, the term is March 31 of this year. It was a, I wouldn't say emergency, but yeah, an emergency appointment to make sure that that board was full. And thank you to, thank you to Doris for her willingness to serve. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes.
Doris says that she will be considered coming on permanently, depending on how much life she has on election.
And just to reiterate what the mayor's...
I'm appreciating her reaction.
And so for those at home, Mayor Weeden Gartner said that Doris is considering serving the term after which this one expires. We'll have to see how she feels about that after Election Day. Fair, that's fair. Presentation of petitions and similar papers. Report of committees. Would any, we hear from Ways and Means quite often, would any other subcommittees like to report out? Seeing none. Unfinished business? Old business? Counselor, Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you. This is maybe unfinished business, and it's not that important, but there's been a couple times where we've called the question, and I know I was guilty of it in December, but I would just ask that counselors be intentional about voting to call the question when not all counselors have had a chance to speak to the motion. I just think it's more appropriate to four times when there's been robust back and forth between everyone. And I understand that with something like the Unit C contract, there was, you know, certainly time for us to discuss it, but I just would thank counselors for considering that.
Thank you for bringing that up. I don't think that that is silly. I think that's important. Discourse is really important, that's a part of our job. I'd also like to encourage, I haven't seen this happen yet, but encourage folks to, if you have to abstain, really think about your abstention. If you can't make a decision, that's not, to me, a good enough reason to abstain. Abstention is reserved for Counsel Ricketts, moving from the table for the purpose because of a conflict of interest. Abstaining is another tool to, I don't, it's just not good enough a reason for me to hear multiple folks abstain, as I've seen in the past, because they're just unable to make a decision. Thank you, Counsel Ricketts. Do you have some, would you like to add anything? All right, thank you. New business. Counsel Ricketts.
At this time, I'd like to dedicate a page in the minutes for Howard Barnard. He passed away yesterday. He was council president, he sat on 27-member council, he sat on school committee, was president of school committee, also on our zoning board. He gave years and lots of dedication to this community. This is, my family is very close to that family, and so I would really like to take that time to do it.
Thank you. Any other new business? Movements for reconsideration. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Meeting is adjourned at 9:05 p.m.